I'm really glad that we had this opportunity to hear the people in the director's positions. Like I said, a year ago or a very long ago, I've been talking about. The director's getting us a strategic plan. And like I was talking to Frank. And the big thing is, is that will something come of all this information that they're providing us? And we'll see what we know so far and what they're faced with. In six months to a year, I know, like I said, I'll be here until isn't here for sure. Who knows after that? But if I'm here a year later, we'll be able to look back and we have a, you know, I think this is something that should happen on a community basis at least. We can look back and see how much has been accomplished with all these, through all these strategic plans. My recommendation would be to take all these strategic plans, put them in a binder so that you could follow. What's been, what, you know, what we talked about today and as things progress in time. And to look back and say, this has been done, this has not been done. These were major issues that we were confronted with. How are we going to address those if nothing's been done with them? And they are real critical issues, so. Go ahead and kick off the afternoon, Mr. Valentine.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, can't have a retreat without doing this. And this is one of my least favorite things to ever do, so I'm not going to be very good at it. So I'm going to need input. Vision statement, mission statements, and you know, going through all that. But it's something that we should do. Um, in your packet and also on the board over here is, uh, council goals that have been there for, for a while and that, uh, page four or five in the packet. Says the city of Trinidad council goals. Trinidad will be a bustling, beautiful and clean city. Be an economically diverse community that supports the needs of businesses and citizens. Provide long-term planning for its strategic financial and infrastructure needs. Enhance community engagement and social capital and collaborate. So those are the current tenants that we have, goals. In here, in the packet, uh, there is an example of, oh. A vision statement and a mission statement that staff put together. Kind of generally, staff, I should say, Donna had worked on this. But, uh, your, your vision statement is the ultimate goal of where you want to get. The mission statement is what we do in order to get to that, that vision. So, um, the vision statement that we put together is to make Trinidad a place of choice to live, work, and play.
And if you look at a, at a mission statement, what it really needs to do is council, staff, and the citizens. We all need to be able to look at that and say, are we all in unison as to what our goals are? What, you know, as, as an entire community? That is what a mission statement should read. So if it doesn't meet that by criteria, then we've got to do something.
Right. So with that said, I'm, I'm open for an open discussion, Mayor, if you want to, you know, just. In our, uh, each job advertisement that we do, we send out the core values. Um, and it's at the bottom of the page. Purpose, responsibility, integrity, dependability, and excellence. Of course, it, you know, first letter spell out pride. Purpose, we strive to bring positive and constructive influences to our interactions with each other and our community. Responsibilities, we take accountability for our actions and promote good judgment, trustworthy behavior. Integrity, we are honorable, trustworthy, and strive to do what is right. We are truthful and open in our interaction with each other and with members of the community. Pardon me for just reading these, but I kind of like them. Uh, dependability, we are conscious, professional, responsible, and reliable in our dealings with each other and our community. And excellence, we respond to challenges and pursue continuous improvements of, and work knowledge. So, um, that's our employees. So, uh, again, I'm open to, uh, listening to council on your, your goals that are out there. If you think they should change, if you think, um, they are good as is, if you want to add.
Well, you know, my, my thought has always been, less is always more. So if you look, if you start making it too lengthy, it gets lost in the coverage, understanding. So if we can make it two words, sounds purposeful across the board, that's one.
Are we trying to change our current vision?
We just want to look and see, is it, is it correct? Like I said, we've never had a mission statement, and we really don't have a mission statement. These that are in here are what staff put together, um, as examples. You know, I really, I really liked the mission statement. I, I think it's, I'm not sure what council thinks.
Which one?
Well, it says, the mission statement, this is on the last page, says, the citizen, the city of Trinidad is committed to delivering exceptional value and quality to life, to all of our citizens, and the city will embrace its solid diversity and equity for all citizens, and recognize that as a privilege to serve the citizens of Trinidad. It's a little lengthy. I'm not sure what the rest of you guys think.
I would just say one thing that I think is, is hopefully a helpful concept. Rather than thinking of things in terms of vision, which is something that's kind of out there that we kind of hope that we're going to get there. And a mission statement, those two things are kind of, they kind of overlap in people's minds, I think. And the better way that I've found to think of those things is that your vision is your ends. What is, what are the ends of the city of Trinidad? What, what do we exist for? And I think our current statement as an end statement, this one that's on the board over there is okay, but it should be worded, instead of Trinidad will, Trinidad is a bustling, beautiful, and clean city. That's one of the ends that we exist for. Trinidad is an economically diverse community that supports the needs of businesses and services. Trinidad provides long-term planning. Trinidad enhances community engagement. Trinidad collaborates. So that you're not thinking someday, out there, we're going to be this way. We're that now. This is what we are as a city. We're that now. And then the mission, from what I'm reading through, the way that that's portrayed, that's more of a means statement. How do we get there? How do we behave on the way? What, you know, how do we interact with our customers, with each other? All those kind of things are, are parts of the means to getting to that end. But I think that's, yeah, I think it's really important that it's a group of people that you are. You all do agree is what are, what's the ends of this organization? Is it to perpetuate what's been? Is it, if you don't all agree about what you're doing, what you're doing for, you have a problem. But I don't think we really do disagree about those things. But I just think that's a helpful way to.
How do you feel about the ambition statement that's in there?
I haven't quite figured out which one we're talking about.
This one, I think.
Or we should say, okay. I, I think it's a nice, I think it's nice.
Do you think it's too long? Is it, is it okay? What's your thoughts?
Um, I, I think it's a little flowery, maybe. It may be a little wordy. I, I think it maybe could be more succinct and focused on what the city itself actually does. And it's, you know, our mission is to provide this service professionally and fairly to everyone, whatever.
You know what else maybe we need to put in here? Some, something about preserving our history, something that, that that's, that's a core.
Core value.
Core value.
I was looking at the mission statement itself.
Yeah, but I was thinking within the mission statement.
Oh, but I go into core values.
It might go in there.
Because, you know, from what I've, I've been involved in developing mission statements before. And the big thing is to look at it to where every, anybody that looks at it can feel like it's a part of it. That they agree with it, maybe not 100%, but the overall concept is what that organization really is about. And then, of course, you have, like I said, your core values, it will be low that. But does, it's something that you look at that you can identify.
It's actually something in my mind that you look at when you're making decisions on all this.
Right.
That we talked about. Is that where we're, this vote towards that?
For staff, citizens.
Right.
So on page three, um, there's some sample mission statements that Donna pulled together. So like, kind of like number three just because it's, it's starting to the point.
I think that's too.
It's kind of bland.
It is.
It's, yeah. Right. It's not real aspirational.
It's just flowery.
Yeah.
So on the last page, Mike put together, um, the city's goals.
It's just a turnaround sentence of, of all those goals. Okay, two sentences.
I like that.
Yeah.
I like that. I like celebrate diversity and equity. I like what you've done there, Mr. Valentine.
Mission statement, I read about it. I mean, when you got, you've got to kind of stress, um, diversity. Being an inclusive community.
Right. And at the same time, you want to, you want to have a mission statement that will stand the test of time.
Yes.
I mean, something that you don't want to change.
The mission statement is, we state the orders of our mission statement because it's. Right, but I think we're getting, because the way that you're using mission here isn't the context that this is providing. It's how we get there. This seems, this mission statement seems to be more of a vision statement, more of an end statement than a how we get there.
How, how do you get there are your goals.
No, that's the opposite of what this is. It's like, it's, it's the opposite of how this is because our goals are these things. City council goals, Trinidad will be these things, which you've just said in our mission statement. So I just think it's really important that you, you don't complicate what it is you're trying to do. What you're trying to accomplish so that it's clear in everyone's mind, this is the direction that we're headed. And then when you come to the questions like Mike was saying, how do we get there? If you know where you're headed, it's easier to make those decisions. But I think that the mission then is how we go about doing that. And that's things like, we don't do things that are illegal. We don't do things without professionalism. We don't, we, those are, that's how we do it.
You talk, and in some sense, you talk about the ethics part of it too. And that, and that comes.
Because how we do it is dependent on how ethical we are and.
If you look, if you look at the, and I don't have it with me, but I've seen it. The, how they define a mission, what a mission statement is. And if, like I said, if it exists, a overarching thought and meaning of what your organization is where everybody, like I said, where everybody can identify with.
So this, that might be a little bit counter to what I handed out. Because the fourth, on the first page, the fourth paragraph. The primary difference between a vision and mission statement is the timeline. Although there can be an overlap between the two, in general, a mission statement defines what an organization is currently doing. While a vision statement is basically the ultimate goal. So the mission is what the people do in order to achieve the vision.
That's right.
So the, the vision is, uh, David said, is the how is the mission versus the why, the vision. So, um.
I like that vision statement that we have to make Trinidad a place of choice to live, work, and play. I think that's enough, that's a timeless goal for this community. We've always had it in good times and yet. I love that vision statement actually because I can relate to it.
What is next? Give us a thought.
Don't smile.
Well, I don't know, I think most cities, their mission is to educate, build, and enhance community relationships with the public. That, that's pretty imperative, but that's kind of a broad generalization, I guess. I don't know if that fits into what you're trying to convey.
It really is.
Yeah, the complete spectrum. Right. So that's my take.
Great. Resting.
Well, I like the vision and mission statement both and the core values. Because ultimately, as it says, you know, it's a privilege to serve the people of Trinidad. If you don't feel that way, then it's a position we shouldn't be in, for sure. And I see we, we have such a great opportunity with so much going on and how far this community has come. It becomes even more pressing for us as a city council to perform because we've been given all the tools. And it's important that we perform with the tools we've been given with, with everything that's happening. That's kind of where I'm at, is to make sure that we definitely are utilizing what's been given us to, to the utmost to move this community forward and plan for the future, an opportunity that didn't, that really wasn't available 10 years ago because of the depression in the community, you know, leaving the gas industry and moving forward. So it makes it even more pressing for us to do a better job for this community right now.
And that's why I say, you know, this mission statement should reflect in pretty much every possible scenario that you may be faced with, whether it's past, present, or future. I've been involved, like I said, a couple of times with vision statement. One time it took us several meetings to even come to a, you know, a true mission statement for that organization. It's something that you really don't take lightly because it takes time sometimes. Sometimes you can find something that may work for you, just depends on the organization.
Can you ask me?
Well, one of the questions that came up earlier is whether Trinidad should take on the role of being, of making high-speed internet a utility, or if that should be in the hands of the private sector. And maybe a mission statement should help to answer that question. You know, and how it's phrased, you know, is this what we do or not?
I like the current mission statement, but I, I still kind of feel that we need to put something about our history. For instance, we can include there, as a city, we embrace our history. Celebrate our diversity and equity. Or maybe two separate statements, we might need. But I think we should embrace and celebrate our history as well.
Frank, you're, you've been on council before. Have you seen what went on, you saw where we're at today and where things are going?
I think the best, you know, the best mission is that we make this a better community. And I agree with Karen. Sometimes, you know, putting a little bit about our history and, and where we want to go and, and make it a better community, I, I think that's all part of the, the mission that we have. And, and we should, should put something in there that we're, we're going to do our best to make it a good community. And, and, and also the people have visions for us to do it right. So that, that's, that's something that's important that, that we need, how would I put it? We need to stand up to what we, what people voted us in there for to make this a better community. And like I say, I, I think that's a pretty good statement. I, maybe we could reword it a little bit with some history and even Erin brought some deals in there. So it, it's not bad. I, I kind of like it. I think you did a good job. But maybe we can add a few things in there to make it more, I think all the council should get in on it. Uh, contribute, Erin?
Erin, I was going to say, what, what are your thoughts?
Where is this seen by people?
Or, what's that, where will this be seen?
Yeah.
We will have it in city council chambers. You could put it on any, you could, you will put it up on our website. Any kind of public information. We could even put it on our business cards, you know, that type of thing.
I agree with everything, uh, Frank said. And, uh, what Councilwoman Ogletree was saying too about the difference between the is and. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then past that, I mean, as long as we agree on it, I'm okay with it. Someone should, uh, make sure it's grammatically correct, uh, completely. That would be embarrassing if it wasn't.
You know, I really think, like I said, sometimes. So save it as grammatically correct. I'm just kidding, Mayor, excuse me.
I think we all agree on it.
We could probably sit here all afternoon to discuss this. My recommendation is, is that we give a lot of time to people to take a look at this and see if they can define it. Have someone on staff to help. On what you're planning or a good job for the planning. My recommendation would be, Erin and Karen, to take a look at this and see if you guys can go out with a good. You know, how are you guys, if you find, give us maybe two or three examples of what you guys would work best on. Why don't you guys figure out a timeline, about a timeline, but sometimes you get together. Take a look at what, what the proposals are here, come up with some ideas. Do you think that will work for you?
That's fine, and I, I want to give kudos to HR. Is the one that, you know, kind of put this together, so I think she would, she would love to be involved in that.
I want to kudos to that one. I definitely want to kudos to that. Thank you, buddy. Yeah, you got me this. Your mission drives up.
Which one? Still not going to help with your disposition.
Okay, that's one, you get on to the ARPA funds, and I think Cheryl, is that Cheryl and Mike probably? Uh, not, not Cheryl yet. Throw her under the bus if you want. Yeah, really. She emphatically shook her head no. So, uh. That's right. You know, that we, uh, we applied through DOLA for our relief funds from the Federals, federal government. And, um, they're coming to us in two tranches. I always thought it was going to be 1.76 million, the numbers that were floating around. When the final numbers came, it was 2.066. And, uh, so not knowing, they said the application is open. So we filled out the app, Cheryl did, submitted. And within four days, got the first tranche of a million dollars in our bank account.
Nice.
Wow, okay, wow, he's right. So it's like, okay, what are the rules on this? Is federal money? There's got to be rules for spending. There's got to be all kinds of stuff, so. Second tranche is coming in a couple of months, is my understanding. So we'll have $2 million. So, um, we've heard several things. We were able to talk with our DOLA rep, Tara Marshall, just last Friday. Their recommendation is hold tight with that money, don't spend it. Just kind of hold tight and see what can be done with it. It could be used for matches to all these other programs that are going out. We don't know if there's, gave us bacon wages involved. We don't know how we can spend it, so we're waiting for those guidelines to come down. Tara provided us with a spreadsheet, and I've got to pass that on to council. Two spreadsheets with all the house bills that pass, all the money that's going to be available. All the, uh, programs that they've set up. I would say there's, what do you think, 25 on that one spreadsheet? Of, you know, we're here to help, we're the government, we're here to help.
Oh, yeah. Trust us, right?
But she said only three have dropped with rules. So they're in the process of, after the legislature passed all this, you know, these programs. And it's funny, somebody's got to have rules to give it out, so we're in that moment.
May I?
Yeah.
But one of the deals, so I was speaking with someone, we can put that money into a higher-yield account. And the interest that it draws, we can.
We can't draw interest on federal funds, according to the audit board.
Is that right? I thought I'd read or I discussed that with someone.
I'll, I'll verify again.
I'll go back, do a look because the way I understood, we didn't put it in the bank and the interest money was not restricted use, but.
I'll make sure. I'll talk to him.
Do you think we're going to DOLA, you tell them that's me. She kind of recommended that too.
She said, yeah, keep it aside and, and don't spend it initially. So the guidelines are out there. It's like, usually there's guidelines and then they give you the money. Here, they just said, here, and dropped in our account, so.
Mike, are you going to talk about that $65 billion and how that's going to work out? Yeah, so I'll, I'll make a note of that. Before we get off of the, the $2 million that we're getting. City staff, I said, think big, think wide, think, think about everything. There's a spreadsheet in here with all of our ideas and we ranked them off to the side after all of that. But there's a welcome center, a convention center, a substation, water treatment plant, um, outdoor recreation. Yeah, there's a new city hall or a city hall addition. There's the Fox neighborhood, a state-of-the-art library, it goes on and on, you know. And then we sat down and kind of ranked them. And from those rankings, uh, we actually submitted to, uh, Hickinlooper and Bennett. I think they're in there. Of this one? We submitted, uh, the natural gas station, that's 2.5 million. We submitted the water treatment plant and pipe upgrade of 106 million. And, uh, the power plant, uh, substation transformer upgrade of 12 million. Also, uh, the urban neighborhoods Fox West Theater Alliance submitted for the Fox Theater. I don't know if it's public yet, but I got a call from Hickinlooper's office. Um, and he is going to bring forward the Fox Theater. I don't know when that announcement will be made, but I guess it's made now, it's on camera. There's a reporter back there. Right away. But it's, uh, uh, there's possibly half of that that he's going to put forward in his federal request for money, so.
Do you think that's more important than some of the other stuff that we want? I mean, did he have the choice for that or did we?
We submitted to them, they make the choice.
Okay, that's, that's what I think, yeah.
Um. It's a little sexier, the, you know, when they had the Fox Theater. He actually came down and played the piano on stage.
Yes, he did. He rocked it. I was impressed too.
So I don't know if that has any serious, but yeah. So with that being said, I don't know if council has any priorities. Uh, I know broadband's been thrown out. With that two million dollars on on how they would see, like to see staff kinda maximize that.
I think, you know, like I talked to you before, Mike, I think that broadband is, if it's a possibility. I think that if we're going to increase. People wanting to move to the community to give our citizens a lower cost to what they're getting now and a better better product. Uh, in fact, if we're going to, like I said, the biggest thing is going to entice people, businesses. I I think that's really rises to the top for me. It really does. Cause it it's almost kinda like a cog in the wheel. From there, there's gonna be other things that'll branch off of it. Council thinks that that's kind of, maybe not all of it, but a portion of it.
With all the people coming in. We have a aging infrastructure distressed, I mean, water, gas, sewer, electric. It's all, you heard him, you know, and.
I think that's more important than all that. What's the, is to work on our infrastructure, you know, more than anything. I mean, the the power substation, without power, what are we gonna do? You know, that breaks down, we're really gonna be in trouble. And I think one of the biggest things we need to work on is, and and I'm not saying that. We should look into some grants about building another water, our our water plant down there. Cause like I said, that's one of the number one things in the state of Colorado is water. And if we have the water, we're gonna draw a lot more people here because we have it. And and that would be better for the whole community. And that's why I say, I mean, the rest of that stuff's fine, but I think priority is what what you're saying is the internet. And after listening today to our our group of guys, we need to really help and work with them. Uh, you know, Dean needs a truck and and other stuff and uh, I think that's where we should really put so put our effort into working.
We could build the population of the community and help pay for any of that stuff. So like I said, you got you got a central cog and kinda stuck that's.
I have a question, cause I'm somewhat confused. So isn't there a separate pot of money for broadband or is it included in the American Recovery Act?
There. So the way I understand it, you know, the federal government gave the states money and then each municipality. But the state money, they've they've got several broadband bills out there for that.
So there's.
There is.
Be separate?
It could be separate slash join. Depending on it. Which may leverage and ask for that money and match it with this money.
Okay, I have another question. So two million sounds like a lot of money, but when it comes to our needs, it's not. So is staff more inclined to use the two million to one specific project? Or to spread it out through the departments? I mean, that doesn't seem like it would be as effective.
I think I can look at it from from my perspective is to take a look at your top pri- one or two priorities. Whether you split it all or three priorities and leveraging, like you're talking about leveraging those dollars. Cause sometimes that leveraging could be a three hundred thousand dollars, a five hundred thousand could be, you know, ten million. That's where, looking at the details of it to see what it would help fund.
Right, and uh, like I said, in discussion with Tara, she's ready to help fill out any kind of application, any kind of type of grant. When those rules come down, so.
Just to let you know, with DOLA, I've got a meeting set up on a regular basis every Friday at ten AM. With, matter of fact, Mike and Lea.
Lea, our new br- Roger and Wally.
Wally, and she asked me to be in on the first few meetings.
Will definitely get Scott involved in that. As he gets his feet off the ground. He's had a heck of a first half a day. But uh, yeah.
He's gonna look at it as a challenge.
And and Wally's been mentioned. By the way, um, you're probably wondering why wasn't the ED director here to give anything? Well, he had this trip planned for quite some time. He actually, um, on Friday after we met with Tara. Drove to Albuquerque to fly to LA to work his way back on the Southwest Chief. And stop along the way and kinda promote and see what he can do as far as, uh, you know. Economic development and and using the Southwest Chief line to get people out there. And he's uh, he's using it for his spaghetti and western over the hill, the ratone. So he's on a working vacation sort of. So so I got broadband infrastructure. Like I said, staff threw together a really, I said, no holes bar, just throw your ideas out there.
And what was the ranking process? How did you guys rank it?
Uh, after we, uh, everybody put these together, we put them in a spreadsheet and we got back together. Everybody pitched their, you know, ideas and such and we ranked them as a staff. But uh, if you look, power substation, water treatment, gas. It was infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure. Public works and landfill equipment, the dozer, uh, tandems came to the forefront. That's uh, that's on our radar right now and uh, uh, fire mitigation at the watershed.
Which is a big one. There hadn't been a fire up there. They'd come close with the spring fire or whatever.
Yes.
You know, from the the two items that I, in addition to what we already talked about. Uh, you know, that Central Park grandstands is gonna become critical. And I don't know how you feel about the landfill equipment. Uh, because that's pretty antiquated. So I'm not sure what council thinks about that. I know the other thing is the welcome center. Although there is some funding, from what I understand, through the tourism board substate to help fund that. How much is available, I really don't know.
Are there any things on this list that we cannot do without this money?
Anything? The substation is twelve million. I I really just wanna use these funds to leverage as much as we can. Turn this two million into, you know, fifteen, twenty million if that's a possibility.
So if we took, if you took, let's say, four or five items on this list, from this list. And see what is out there and what it would take to le- to leverage additional funding from that two million. Maybe we could look at it?
Yes. We didn't have the list until Friday on on what was available, so. So um, I'll get that out to council. It's it's got links. It takes you to a website that. It's a, it's a good comprehensive list. Prioritizing on on these, you know, uh, state of the art library. You know, there's, that'd be great, but there's a lot of other needs out here.
Did you ask in terms of urgency with the perception of staff?
That's that's how we came up with those that are ranked.
Just desirability, but their urgency.
Right. And that's, if you look, the ones that came up were the substation treatment plant, the gas, uh, fire mitigation.
The swimming pool cover didn't get a rating, was that an oversight or?
Uh, I think we didn't rate that because city council already directed, committed those funds. And so we were like, well, they're there. Not necessarily what we, we had to commit for audit reasons, but we can change that. But that spreadsheet is also in there for committed funds. You know, the Riverwalk improvements, exit fourteen, uh, West Main, the covered swimming pool. And the others were, uh. The land acquisition that we had already, it had to be committed. I'd say that absence is Eagle Rock that's sitting there and fleet.
Is three the lowest number they went? One, two, and three, is that?
Yeah, that's kinda what we did. One, two, and three.
So there's a lot of threes.
Right.
So Mike, would you say then, uh, let's take our top five items on there and you guys can. Lay in on this, uh, broadband fiber optics. Sewer water infrastructure. And like I said, over the two that throw at the top. I threw in there the public works, landfill equipment. Consideration of the welcome center, if that's, how necessary that is. I'm not sure if there's anything else in here that's. I don't know that downtown walking trail lighting, that's a a grant. That may be different. So I'm not sure if there's any another item or if there's other items that council feels like. Maybe we could take that, those four or five items and see how that. Anything spans any though, if we apply for grants for any of those items. What kind of uh, funds we need to be leveraged to get that money?
I think the fire mitigation project on on watershed is so passed due that. I think there's a grant every year that totals, what, fifty, forty, fifty thousand dollars about all the money?
That's our match.
That's our match?
It's usually about two fifty, uh, the grant and, um, yeah, I mean, it's, the watershed is.
I know, it's massive.
It's massive and so Gil has been working with uh, Swimwell Fire Protection and Julie Kunitz. Purgatory watershed partnership, doing mostly along our our ditch A and Whiskey Creek. Those are the ditches that collect the water and take them to North and Monument Way and uh, so.
It is the last untouched watershed in the state of Colorado. Ours is. There's no other watershed that is untouched.
Untouched by fire?
No, untouched. It, no one will fire, that no one can get to. I mean, it is the last. You know what I'm saying? And I think uh, it is our lifeline here for growth for everything. And if we don't, you know, place a priority on a second water treatment plant. Then a priority definitely needs to be to protecting that watershed. Because it would devastate this community, growth, everything.
I I think it would be helpful if we had some kind of a, what's the recourse if we don't devote these funds to this idea? What's the recourse? Are the grants available? Is it something we can fund by city revenues? You know, I don't think, I don't look at any of this as either or. I look at it as both and. We're just trying to figure out how we spend this special sum of money the most effective way. For the most urgent thing that we can't get money some other way.
And keep in mind too that there's all this money that's out there now. But going into the future, the state and the federal government will always have funds for different things as time goes on. So that would be something else to think about. Can some of these be delayed a year or two or three?
I I think maybe we should, on the ones that are top priority that we've listed. Maybe do an additional test or qualification on them and wait and wait then. According to if the money's there, the the cost of the project, like the, what is it? This twelve million, the new power substation. You know, things that we can do that are within our grasp. It's financial and. Wait them again and see. Of the ones that staff did. Top priority.
There's, there are just so many items that we really understand what the needs are. And it's very difficult to say in some cases, which are more important than the others.
Yeah, there is. It's, I think it's more attainability than.
That's sometimes attainability means that you hold off and save the money until you can do it. So do you stop while everyone?
No, there's no.
No, you spend it and you move on to the next one, further down the road sometimes.
So.
You have to prioritize because of the.
Okay, that's another. So is everybody, like I said, I'll read them off again and see if there's any others. Do you guys feel like we're in sync, all of us, as priorities that we listed? Like I said, welcome center, that that is a two. Uh, secondary water treatment system. Other infrastructure projects, uh, the public works, landfill equipment, that's gonna hit us. Uh, wildfire mitigation, fire optics. Those are the ones that I had written down. Do you agree with those or disagree or have any additions? If I should take away, what do you?
We purchased the land for the landfill expansion. Is that gonna be enough to take us fifty years down the road? I mean, we definitely need to look at future generations and our issues with the landfill. That's a pretty important need and an opportunity for us to prepare. Prepare this community for the future, far beyond us and multi-generations. Is the land we've acquired enough and will it extend the use of the landfill? Far into the future where it's not a major concern?
The 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 blundermere there is if we add to the landfill, will we have to do a liner for it?
Yes, if we, if we, we are grandfathered in for the footprint where we have now. I knew that, I think it was Tom Ingraham bought where the wormhole loop trail is. He wanted to do a regional landfill. Um, at the time, uh, the regulations and it was just cost prohibitive. Because of the liner. And if we do something like that, then all those rules fall back on our grandfathered in landfill. So um, we purchased the wormhole trail for cover, for final cover. And that's that that lower level. And then we just purchased uh, thirty-five acres. And we bought, that's where we're cutting and getting material. There's uh, a lot of material there. It's for uh, daily cover. It's not for final cover. When we come to final cover, it's special material. Has to have a certain amount of clays in it to to seal it and everything. So, um, yeah.
But we're still cheaper to add on than to build a new.
If we can get a permit to be built.
Correct.
Right.
It is still more cost effective to add than to build a new.
Everybody, uh, all the smaller communities are uh, getting out of the landfill business and doing transfer stations. To the bigger facilities.
We don't even know how long those bigger ones will last.
Right.
Cause everybody's pouring stuff into it and how long, where they go to rest.
Right.
So. But transfer stations allow for a better uh, stream and and recycling stream where they can. stream and, and recycling stream where it can separate. Whereas now you get your trash and the hauler takes it to the face, dokes it out and we bury it. You know, you were in San Jose, what are they doing in that area of this, what are they doing in San Jose, this, this particular?
Well, I know, like, we, we ship our glass to Arizona or to Colorado. So that's pretty expensive recycling operation, but, um, I don't know the details of, of how they have their landfill. But we have a covered landfill, which is now like a dog park. And then, um, and we have a current landfill which, uh, you know, I'm thinking, but I think a lot of it's transferred out. And I think they are filling in some.
How, how viable is a transfer station for us? How far into the future would you need? If you're staying twenty years on it?
Uh, we're, after reanalyzing it, I think we're like, we've got twenty-five years left. It was thirty years forever, then when they, you know, they based it on a upward growth and we flattened out, if not dropped off in two thousand and five, seven, somewhere in there. Now we're ramping back up. We probably have twenty-five years, uh, landfill life and then we'll have to do something anyway, so. Transfer stations are probably the way to go. Unless we want to, you know, build another cell for the community and just, I don't even know the cost of building a cell now and putting all the liner in. Could we maybe look at to extend the life of that? Is, would it be possible to take periodically and take a quarter of what we do and transfer it out? And build up the life of this instead of twenty-five, twenty or twenty-five years? Now we can go thirty-five or forty years by transferring maybe a certain percentage of our burned stuff. Taking a look at the cost of what that would be. Right. I'm not sure if you want to add to the cost, it would add to the cost of, back to the the refuse department, but I think it'd be well worth it to possibly extend the life of our landfill.
So with that, if we're going to do, just theoretically, if we're going to do that? And the landfill isn't prioritizing with the transfer station fees group? I don't feel?
Probably, yes. So they're taking a look at all the costs that would be involved if it's. Yeah, well, you'd have to have, you'd have to build a, a building with docks and, uh, then we have to truck it somewhere or contract with another landfill that comes and hauls it. There's.
Yeah.
We have to staff it. Yeah, just a thought.
So in what capacity is our wastewater treatment plan running at and how much growth capacity do we have before we need to worry about the expansion there?
We're at, uh, sixty percent basically, so, uh, we're good up to
About like a water.
Two point five million gallons per day and we are running at a million-ish a day, so.
We've got enough growth with it, like we do with our water infrastructure.
That's correct. And luckily, uh, Jacobs is, is on that.
Yeah.
They're really thorough and keeping an eye on that for us. Of course, we'll have to look at upgrades to that facility periodically because Yep. We know that the, what goes in it is very costly. Yep, plus regulations change constantly. Okay, I'd like to say with those recommendations, if that's what council feels they're agreeing with, uh, take it back and work on it and see.
Do you put the power substation in?
Do you look at that too?
Well, you know, I, you know, twenty-five years ago when I was working on a power line, we lost a switch in that substation and took, took almost a month and a half to get it repaired. And we were lucky because ARPA has a trailer that has a substation in it and they bring it. But, you know, I, I still think the important things are the electrical and, and the water. Uh, even though storage tanks, if we don't replace all three of them, we should be working on doing at least one of them every year or so to get that caught up because.
Run a power station to that and see, do you guys kind of take a look at it and see what you, sure, what staff can do with that?
I want to, I want to be sure I understand something. When we say we're prioritizing the broadband, what does that mean?
Prioritize means a, a, a means to be able to increase our capacity for our current population and income, income and population. So that we can build broadband in this community, so we can sell internet connectivity to, to the current citizens, the current business, and to anybody else that wants to move into Trinidad. Which will help offset and pay for that, those costs.
So, I mean, but the next steps would, because seven years, uh, return on investment, that's not very good. Especially, I mean, I think we don't know more things than we do know about it. I mean, we would go out and have a really, s- some research done to get a, yeah.
We definitely hired some consultants.
And then another thing that I think we're not looking at is, there's, there's a lot of progress being made on wireless coming up. I mean, um, what's, what is that system called that Elon Musk is launching? I mean, we're more and more moving away from wired systems all the time. And to say has a seven-year payback in technology, I mean, that's going to be, you know, it could be prehistoric by the time it's paid off and then it would have been a giant waste of money. Not to mention that I'm sure the price per subscriber becomes higher and higher the fewer subscribers you have. So in order to get the seven-year payback, that means you have to build out the whole plant.
You know, I heard this about, about twelve, fifteen years ago, that we would already have wireless connectivity in this country. It's never happened.
Yeah, well, I mean.
So I mean, so the question is.
Yeah, but there's, there's active steps being taken towards it now.
In the end, like a cost, I'm going to ask Cheryl from the county side, the seven-year return, is that good? At?
I, I don't know because I, I would say not so good. Especially if the city, we're talking about the city building a new utility, correct? No. I wouldn't say that it is. I mean, maybe three to five years would be a lot better. But again, you know, the city will be handling the brunt of the cost or, um, general fund will have to sustain it, just like we're sustaining the landfill. And do we want to be sustaining two enterprises? I don't know.
That's why I say we do, I mean, we do need to, because we're in, yeah, probably, yeah, we're in. We don't know if wireless is here tomorrow or fifteen or twenty years from now. As a matter of fact, I was telling the, uh, I heard about fifteen years ago. And they were saying at that time that the, I don't know if it was the Department of the Army was the one that was going to create wireless connectivity throughout the town. Heard that, like, I think fifteen years ago. So it makes sense.
Well, with the president's one point two trillion dollar country's infrastructure bill, broadband was a big part of that too, and there's a lot of money. So we can always be in hopes that hopefully a company like Comcast that doesn't want to upgrade their equipment down here to bring us up to how the rest of the bigger communities are running, will possibly get some of that money and upgrade their infrastructure down here and increase the reliability of internet completely would change everything.
Oh, I talked, I talked to the guy from the regional director here a while back from Comcast. And basically, he said, we're, if you talk about the total poll, we're not even at the bottom of the total. So that's what's, that's what really scares me with Comcast.
With the growth of the community, it increases as we move up that pole a little bit. There's, there's just not enough customer base here to warrant them to spend the money to upgrade the services. But if the government's giving that money away and it would be directed at rural communities, which is exactly how it was wrote, then that would put us on, bring us up that total pole for Comcast to receive money to make our service much better in this area.
Maybe I need to go back, go back to him and ask him if they're going to be getting any of that, where they go, where they go.
Or use us as an example, as rural communities bringing it to, to help secure that.
The other thing with that, with wireless, by upgrading, is it going to keep our costs, is it going to reduce our costs, or is it going to increase the costs? It would be a double answer.
Yep.
Why don't you guys take a look at that?
In your spare time?
Yeah.
On Sunday, Monday, you're right. Well, and Mary mentioned the, uh, actually I won't remember which bill it is now, but it's through O Edit and DOL for, uh, creative slash housing incentives and there's sixty-five million dollars put in that pot. We have the space great commons. It looks like we have a good chance to go after that. There's sixty-five million for across the state. And Tara said, so I'll give you two bites of that app. I'm going to send the biggest mouth up there to get one good bite anyway.
Yeah, that's, that's all right. I can take my teeth out and make even a bigger bite.
But, uh, there's a good chance that we can get half of that, if not a little more of that two point eight million dollar shortfall there for the commons. So with what we have now in, in this program, we, we may be able to, to get funded. And we should know as early as September. I think the end of August is when we're finally going to get the guidelines for applying. We're going to pre-qualify ourselves here. Dates, I didn't bring them notes, but within a couple of weeks, we're going to fill out pre-application, get all the questions answered upfront. So then when application comes in, we're there. Here's the conundrum with that sixty-five million dollars is that? So you try that, make one for some money, David Crawford, you make one for some money. Jay Von, Kay Von, and anybody else in the community. And what they're going to be doing is that the monkey is going to fall back on us. So the mentality is, let's say Kay Von goes and asks for three projects, Dana goes and asks for two projects, Jay asks for two projects, and we have two or three projects. They're going to expect council to determine, because they will probably get funded for no more than two or three projects for the entire community. So it's going to be up to the city, the city council to determine which projects are the most viable. It's going, it's going to fall on us to make that decision for all of them. So what's going to happen is that they go up to the DOL and they say they want to do this, they're going to send it back to the city, they're going to have to send that to the city.
As good as they do that, because we'll take the money to do our own projects.
Yeah.
That's right. So that's a big, we're going to be facing that, it's no fun. I just wanted to try, I just wanted to mention that, so. Tara was very apologetic. She said, uh, sorry, but it's going to fall back on council to provide. She's the big person for any information, you're right, along with Marvin and Julie. Housing incentives, um, we've been, uh, talking about housing, our assessment and everything for a while. While they put the housing assessment out in, as of Thursday or Friday, we had once and I don't know if we have anymore. But that housing assessment, uh, study should be coming forward to council. Not the study, but the consultants that would do the study, we asked for proposals for that. Along the incentive package, I've included for you in your packet, an email from, uh, Mike Yerman from SCET. And he, he's listed out his, his proposals on how he would meet with council, how he would, uh, kind of have special meetings and come down and discuss, um, strategies on, on our incentives and how we move forward. Just, uh, last week, he, he gave me a very general scope of services. His budget is, uh, not to exceed fifteen thousand. But I wanted to just, I wanted that on there because I know that housing has been a discussion. I just wanted to let you, council know, um, where we're at in the process.
And where did he do incentives before?
He did it in, um, Restiput, Salida. He's currently working on, on one with, um, Bend to Powers and, and Terrell County. So it, it's not only, you know, city council put, put aside some money, but this whole incentive is, is looking at all avenues for housing. And that's really what we need to, you know, all of us together probably doesn't have all of the knowledge necessary to put together a good incentive plan. Someone who has funded it fast, you know, because he has put together some, so I think it's, it's really worthwhile. You have to have a piece of that, please. Do you want to read this, do you?
I had a question, it's sort of pertaining to the housing issue. I, I spoke with Mike Gray that night of the, um, the open house there. And Mark Gray.
Mark Gray, oh, uh, New Alphamore, yes.
Yeah, sorry. And he was saying, I didn't, he didn't share the plan. He said that the mining themselves are going to do, uh, housing subdivision or, or man camp or half, half something. Do you know any of the details of that?
I spoke with him previous to the, uh, to the open house that they had, who had a sit-down. He's, he's looking at all options. He's, uh, wondering where our infrastructure is, where he could build. He is looking at, um, man camps, like you said. Currently, they kind of have one. They, they've rented every room available at the roadway inn. He's paying forty-eight thousand dollars a month. Roadway Inn is past Tequila's, it's that long blue, uh, so he, he's got all those rooms rented and the miners are coming in and staying there. Of course, there's no kitchen, so he's catering food for them. He's, he's doing everything he can. He's looking upriver at, at areas that he knows. Part of that is utilities and working with the county and working with the state because there's no sewer. They have to have a septic slash meat distill or, or haul it.
It makes you understand why they were company towns.
Right, right, that makes sense.
You're right. You have Primero, Segundo, Tercio, Cuatro.
Boy, the former union.
So, um, so he's looking at all, all options and so. From the housing forum that we had, he, he put out there, any, any developers that would like to talk, place call. He said he got very little interest. So it baffles me how we have the need. Our housing inventory is short, you know. Our housing inventory is short, you know. There's no rentals, but there's nobody out there breaking down the doors to come build, so.
It's too expensive right now, that's a problem.
That's a problem in this.
And labor, that's a real issue.
Nobody wants to work. Well, you know, the thing bothers is, they're doing so much about in trouble Colorado Springs and Denver. I mean, we drive up there, there's development, development, but it's commercial, residential, multi-house. They're just gonna get angry, and I just keep saying this, and all the people up there are just pat and sassy, and they just say, why should I be here? I really wish that we could get a couple of the local companies to join forces to do something, or to make it work together. I'm not sure if that's something that, you know, planning and economic development could talk to these people, get together two or three and say, how can you guys do it together to develop some properties, hopefully if there's land here or whatever, we can work together. That cost of material will eventually come down some. There's already been a reduction in some of the actual lumber costs and the cost, they're still staying up there, from what I've seen. The big thing, I think the labor cost is gonna stay there. Lumber costs are probably not coming down to where they are a year ago. But they will come down to somewhere. And so we've had several developers talk. Dana's gonna do East Street School, that's thirteen units, it's more of a live-work slash schooling. Heard of the mountainous culinary school.
And they're all studio apartments.
Right. Now, there's a couple in there that are bigger, but we're right, they're studio apartments with kind of loft beds built above. So, I mean, it's an old school. And then Kip Hampton Group is working towards something at the old cabinet school. But it's, it's slow and code.
I talked to somebody from Kip slash Tumbers in the planning process. They're calling their project Workforce.
Workforce housing.
And they're talking about building the venture businesses.
There's, there's that option out there. I think, I'm not at liberty to say, but they're looking for an acre, acre and a half to build, you know, a group of condos with the common area, just for, nothing fancy, just workforce housing.
You know, I really wasn't in favor of the incentive program prior to today. And I listened to the three women from the utilities. I'm thinking, I think that's the wrong direction for the city to go, because I really do believe that money invested in those utilities are really good, that will serve the community well, and it wasn't incentives. I really, I'm really of belief in trying to make Trinidad the best possible community we have, by trying to address some of the issues we have, by trying to improve the quality of life. Whether the housing incentive type, maybe it's the capitalist scheme that doesn't believe that that is a viable project. I really, I really have my doubts about that. Another thing that I really think is a problem, and I don't know if I have the solution, but I talked to somebody the other day on the Airbnb, these short-term rentals, and they're still insisting, Cheryl, that they're not getting the lodging tax. We're not getting the lodging tax. We're getting sales tax, but no lodging.
So we started collecting from Airbnb. I wanna say, gosh, maybe last October? I don't know, but once a month, we get a check from Airbnb, and it's specific. We don't get to know who's paying it, but Airbnb has started collecting on that behalf.
And they give you, maybe not who, but let's say we have sixty-five Airbnbs in Trinidad. Are they collecting fifty, or can they give you that information?
I can ask.
That way we know if there's a shortfall or something.
Is it showing sales tax and lodging tax?
Yes, we were collecting sales tax for quite a long time, but we just started collecting Airbnb.
What about from VRB?
No. They go through Expedia, and the state is working to try to coordinate a contract to get them to start collecting as well. The only, and Expedia, according to the state, because I think an attorney helped me somewhere with the department revenue, and they said they just, they can't get Expedia to comply. The only one is Airbnb, and then there's a couple that do run their own.
Right.
Rentals, and they pay themselves, they submit on their own.
So like that VRB, they're not following the suit, so I think that's where we have to be a political decision.
Well, the state is aware of it, that's why they've assigned this law firm to work with it. But that was, geez, maybe right when COVID hit, that's when we heard that they couldn't get Expedia to comply. So we've been a year out already, and nothing.
So does it appear on the amount of money we're getting that it would match how many we have?
It seems like the, the private pays, they're just, it doesn't seem like we're collecting very much, but I'm used to the hotels, I mean, thousands of dollars.
Right.
So when you look at it, if that's going to be, I divided that by the quarter, it kind of seems like it can match up, I would guess.
Next time you give us a financial report, can you just give us a bottom dollar of what you're collecting from the STRs?
I, I can give you what we collect in lodging tax, but I can't split it out from whom we're collecting.
That's right.
Right. Yes. Yes.
Do you remember the email we got from a gentleman last week regarding?
His opinion on short-term rentals, yeah.
He brought up a really good point, and I still feel, I don't know how other council people hear about this, but I really think we have to start promoting short-term rentals, because I'll tell you, he brought up a point that is absolutely right. We might have a two-block area of Trinidad where there's affordable housing for people to buy and renovate and turn into a short-term rental. You might have a full two-block area in a residential area of Trinidad with Airbnbs.
Les, you've had some reservation on licensing these people. Well. Actually, you've had some reservation.
Well, this is a series of conversations that we've had over the years. And that is, if we try in any way to regulate these, like we had talked about trying to regulate or control the quality of Airbnbs, then we kind of have to worry about things like ADA compliance and things of that nature. So it seems like it's kind of an all-or-nothing sort of prospect, and it's just better to have it than to not have it, for a variety of reasons. And I, I think you can have, I think Karen was saying, you almost get more of a stratification if you don't allow, you know, short-term rentals. And then, I mean, if you do allow it, then, more stratification if you don't than if you do. So it, it just.
And I read something last, and I don't know if this is correct, but I read for the ADA to be applicable to a short-term rental, they have to have X amount of units.
They have to have X amount of units, well.
I don't know, but I think, you know, it, for those of us that, well, we all live in residential areas, but you know, the thought of having business, their businesses in the residential area.
Yep.
I mean, I think it would be foolish to, to figure out what kind of monster is out there that's infiltrating the residential areas and making them into business. I mean, you know, I go, there's one down the street from you, and every time I go by, there's somebody else in there.
I bet, I bet.
I love them, excuse me.
No, I'm sorry.
What you're saying is contrary to what you were saying before about capitals, because the reason people do.
But, but sorry, but what I'm saying is, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I have to ask. But say, for instance, if I wanted to open an insurance agency in my office, I'd have to go through a committee with the city of Trinidad. We're allowing small businesses, as in residential areas, with a hot knowing where they're at, kind of. You know, just like there's a, there's a couple of beauty shops in residential. We have to go through processing. I mean, I'm not saying we should stagnate with that, but I'm saying we've got to know what to look at.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but all I'm saying is that that's part of the reason why you would want housing incentives, and have some kind of an overview of our land use code to determine whether or not we should have policies.
We go back to incentives, I was gonna ask, you know, how did they approach incentives of any, any short-term rentals, do you know?
Well, incentive system is, is more theoretical than practical. What they did is they created a cap on the number of permits they would give for short-term rentals. And so people who had a short-term rental had to apply for a permit, and I think those were given out really nearly, and not really with third-party accounting system, because I sort of heard a little bit secondhand, you know, kind of through the grapevine, that they weren't even sure how many permits had been given out, and how many were left. You know, and so they're not, I don't think they've reached a point where they have figured out how to enforce it. But the idea is, it's a fairly simple permit process. It did trigger, like, an inspection, and I'm not sure if it was ADA requirements or what the details of that were, but you did have to bring your house up to a certain standard to use it as a short-term rental. Then that makes you unlevel.
Right, and that is a nightmare scenario. I mean, like, let's tell Kent Robinson that he now has to inspect like four hundred. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Scott, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, go ahead. And the cost of that was put onto the homeowners.
Okay, right. But you know, if we decide, it's like, okay, we want people, they're doing these short-term rentals to get a business license. And then they're gonna say, well, why? And it's like, you know, what are you doing? What's the end game? And you want me to reveal that I'm doing this in other communities, you know, people can conduct these businesses and you don't have to. Why do you want to know, you know, that I have an Airbnb, and I've done it for years, and what are you doing? I mean, I think there would be a pretty huge outcry. And, and I, I get it, you might want to know, but it kind of is suggesting that there is a larger purpose and overall scheme for asking them, you know, to disclose themselves and get a business license, than just saying, well, we just want you to disclose yourself and have to get a business license.
So, so another approach incentive does that I don't think makes a whole lot of real sense in, but it kind of relates to the comment that was made earlier, is that they have sort of a spatial requirement, that you can't have two Airbnbs or short-term rentals that are interfering, I think, for magic views each other.
So what would they impose that's?
Well, they don't really, you know, like, they haven't really gotten that part down yet. You know, it's kind of a new, it's a new thing, and they're trying to figure it out. But I think philosophically, it might be a little bit wrong-headed to go like Sanifay's route, and say, hey, we should put a cap on the number of permits or on where they can be, because the underlying problem is there isn't enough housing.
Right.
You know, we're lucky to be in a place that people want to visit, and the Airbnbs are successful enough, you know, to, to draw people in and bring in the extra money, you know, tourist dollars, that are going to those property owners, but also to all the businesses.
I like the new guy.
So, so like the foundation problem is, is we need more housing. You know, and if some of that new housing that gets built is also Airbnbs, well, if there's a demand for it, then, then that demand is gonna.
You're saying that the problem may care.
Well, not exactly. I mean, I mean, there's some probably, there's some probable, probable things that city council can do, which, which I'm not gonna make a recommendation now, but I mean, to start thinking, you know, what can we do to enable more housing to be created by maybe changing density requirements? By, you know, like, one thing that can often impose on affordability of redevelopment are parking requirements. You know, how important is it to require parking and essentially subsidize vehicles for people who may or may not want to own vehicles? You know, and so I think if we can look at ways to, to, you know, since this is a council meeting, right, to think about how can the council create a legal framework that's more inviting to creating affordability? You know, and so, and so maybe I can kind of put together some, some different frameworks, and if something happens at a future meeting, so we can think about just, just the barriers that we're creating.
Getting, getting back to the incentive portion that we're talking about, that's part of this discussion. Does Sanifay do any kind of incentives, and what are they, do you know?
They are doing a number of different projects. I'll need to do a little bit more specific research on exactly what they're doing with, like, their clients in Lightcap. So we have some of that. The city has, within one developer, who's doing like mixed-use live-work, live-work project. The city basically dated the land, or are doing, so city-owned land, and so the city used to buy the land, and the developers sort of went along with the city's vision in creating the type of development that the city would see. So we can look at, kind of, what is city-owned, and how can we use city-owned property to further the city's vision?
One of the things that, one of the first thoughts we have on some of the incentives, we have, some of this money set aside for incentives, and what we thought we would do with that is, let's say if development came in wanting to build, let's say, I think it was fight units, was it? Fight units? Is that maybe we would help offset their cost with maybe some utility meters?
Yeah, so that's pretty common, you know, or, you know, a lot of times, I know, like, Art Space operates on this model, so they'll have like a percentage, percentage of units at, you know, thirty percent AMI, a percentage at sixty percent. You know, so the market rate units kind of subsidize the low-market rate units. But that kind of requires a developer to be doing multiple units. And it looks, my first impression of Trinidad is that a lot of the space available for redevelopment are small parcels. You know, so a developer may only build one duplex, or, you know, what can fit on a small parcel. So those kinds of things that maybe work in big cities where a developer's doing sixty minutes and something affordable, might be less meaningful, it might be less attractive as an incentive.
Well, I think now that you're on board, we've put together this plan for a future discussion.
I want to ask you a question.
Yoshma.
So, just the fact that we're levying a lodging tax, and the Airbnbs are giving us that money, is that somewhat of a, are we liable as we collect that money?
I don't believe we are. I mean, I don't believe we have any liability, like, if there was a slip and fall.
No, no, I mean, as, as what this municipality does for other businesses, you know, okay? We have a, it's a permitted business, so therefore the city can go in and say, hey, you're not doing this right, you're not doing that right. But we're allowing businesses in residential areas with no oversight from the city, assuming that our liability is nil. But if we're allowing these to be within the city, we're collecting revenue from them. If something goes awry with these, will the city be responsible?
Well, I'm hard-pressed to think of an area of liability that may exist for us, right? I mean, liability how, like a class-action lawsuit, or?
Anything.
I, I can't think of anything that.
Say we have an Airbnb that there were some illegal activity going on in there, and the next-door neighbor's house got blown up because of a meth now, or something like that. I'm stretching and trying.
No, I understand, I understand, and I, I wanna, you know, it's my job to.
Because the city did not take. Because the city did not take steps to, to stop that activity.
I would just say that I, I don't think we have any liability. I mean, any kind of ongoing, you know, legal activity is like contrary to a short-term rental, right? And we would be like, well, we didn't know that somebody was there for months, and they were having a meth lab, right? I mean, that would be, I think, you know, that, that's owner, property owner responsibility. Even though we're allowing them to conduct this business activity, I don't think it adds to or increases our exposure for liability purposes. I, I like the way you're thinking, and I, I mean, I get it, but I, I just don't think it does. And we can say, it is so attenuated, you know, we just get money magically deposited, you know, for these funds, we don't know the who, the what, the when, the where. We don't know any of that.
Same with hotels, correct? I mean, it's, we can't be held liable for what happens at a hotel.
But a hotel is inspected, I see.
Right, and, and, yeah, but we just don't know what the activity is, so I don't think, in order for you to be liable, it either has to be like some form of strict liability, or you have to have a culpable mental state, whether it's recklessness, negligence, I mean, negligence may not really be a culpable mental state, but it has to be something. And I, I don't think we have any kind of legal obligation to maintain, you know, legal or lawful activity in a place that we don't even know where it is or what's going on. Does that make sense? Okay.
I'm just trying to figure it out, my own mind.
Right. I, I also don't know of any municipalities that have had legal liability for something really horrific going on in a short-term rental. Right, like, a house explodes because there was a meth lab, it was an Airbnb, and the city should have known about it.
So let's take a break, and in the meantime, does that guy answer some of your questions on incentives? Possibly, and of course, Airbnb heavily involved in that, but we're planning in some areas, we have got control of rentals, for my users, it's a part of the deal. A lot of that stuff, that's Mike presenting, Mike taking on this plate. So, that's gonna take about a ten-minute break, we gotta go and come back with more.
You gotta shoot your meth lab now.
I got a bad review on Airbnb.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
So, you know, we're just, yes. So.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Anything we've discussed regulates, now, any authority operating as far as distancing between them with so many employees, would be grandfathered helping head mics are shut down for restaurants. Yeah, so I mean, your test, this is all shit, like the rare one, should have been sent in the beginning. Right.